Oh, it's Brett.
I call, is this working? All right, good. I call the October 19th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:03. Ms. Pinyard, will you call roll?
Chair Ron Habeline.
Here.
Cameron Mezba.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Olive Gallagher.
Brianna Tucinski.
Here.
Erin Woods.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And moving on to citizens' input. This is the time that the citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
Chair, there is no one on Zoom here to testify. Is this microphone working? It is, okay.
I can't hear you, but hey.
I know. It felt like just my normal voice. I would also ask the Chair and the Commission whether or not you have any interest in entertaining additional comments after the work session and item as we have done previously during work sessions like this, so that members who are here about the item can hear the staff presentation first. But I would leave that to the Commission to make a determination on now, to decide whether or not we should take public comment now or after the item.
I think it's a great idea. We'll have that available for anybody who wishes to. All right, not seeing anything. We will move on to the work session, Frog Pond East and South Master Plan, without Mr. Polly.
Correct. So we all are congratulating Mr. Polly on the addition of a beautiful baby girl in their household, and hopefully I will be able to help carry this item forward in his absence this week. This is a really exciting moment. I hope all of you are very excited to see this giant 100-plus-page master plan in your packet. This is the culmination of a lot of work, not just of the project team, but of all of you. So as I always do at this moment, I say thank you. Thank you for all of the work you've put into this. You're going to put more into this tonight, and we appreciate that, especially since it's an extra work session and you have given additional time out of your lives volunteering for this community to help shape this master plan, to guide what will be one of the next great neighborhoods in the city of Wilsonville. So thank you for your commitment and for your help on this. There is, one of the, the main purpose of tonight is for you all to have that opportunity to review that master plan and provide us comments you may have on it. As you're aware, there's a few items that we've either received feedback from you on that we now need to bring back to you, particularly related to the transportation network, as well as some of the cross-sections. We have yet to talk to you about stormwater, so we're going to talk to you about stormwater tonight, as well as a few public realm items. So the presentation will walk through those items in more depth. We will also connect back with you around the housing variety discussion we had two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whenever that was. It's all blending together at the last work session on Frog Pond. We will connect back with you on the strategies that came out of that work session, just to confirm those with the Commission and make sure we've captured those correctly. And those can be found in the implementation section of the master plan. The last thing I would note is that there's also two pieces of material in front of you, public comment, written public comment from AKS and the West Hills team. They testified previously at the last work session. This is additional information they've submitted about a request to potentially update the master plan as it relates to the Type 1, Type 2, and Type 3 urban design. There's a few specific lots that they have highlighted that they would like to have changed. A couple of them are along Stafford and changing that from Type 2 to Type 1, so from the middle kind of density or middle height, middle form, to the higher-density form, and then a couple parcels by the park. It looks like maybe in the updated material we just received 10 minutes ago, the larger packet, that the areas around the park might be a change, that they might be okay with the Type 1 by the park. So we'll probably hear from them about that. The reason why you probably received that extra packet as we walked in here was that I sent, I confirmed we received their public comment, and I, as staff, asked if we could see some precedent images of what they're thinking about, so that we can understand whether that's actually fitting within the Type 1, Type 2, Type 3, as we have already outlined it and talked about it as a planning commission, as a community, to see if it's actually aligning. And if it's not, that we can then have that conversation and understand that. But I thought that the images might help us to understand, kind of better understand as we've been visualizing it over the last six months and how that lines up with some of the housing products that West Hills is envisioning. So with that, I just want to introduce the items that are in front of you. I'm not adding them to the record tonight because the hearing is not tonight, but we will do so when we get to the hearing next month. So with that, I think I'm going to hand it over to Joe. I will actually launch the presentation, but I'll let Joe Dills from MIG take it from here.
Thanks, Miranda, and good to see you in person again, Commissioners. Maybe just a couple of introductions. We have, it takes several of us to fill Dan's shoes tonight. So I'm here in person. Jenna Bogart?
Bogart.
Bogart from DKAS Transportation Advisors is also here for your questions on transportation. We have two team members online. Mike Carr with Murray Smith, who's going to talk about stormwater. And we have Ken Peery with Walker Macy, who's going to talk about street trees and the gateway plan and lighting. And we'll all kind of work together on that. Okay. So as Miranda indicated, tonight's focus is on the draft master plan. Emphasis on the draft. You probably noticed that there were some placeholders, some writing we still have to do here and there. We tried to focus on key substance, but you can imagine the practicalities of generating 150 pages and checking it twice. So there were a couple of things that we saved for the hearings-ready draft, which will be the next version. So our focus tonight is mostly on either updated material or new material to give you quality time on that. There will be opportunity to comment on the entirety of any topic, but the presentations will center around stormwater, transportation updates, street trees, lighting, and gateways, and then a little bit about the comprehensive plan implementation. To put this to the calendar, staff has scheduled the public hearing for November 16, so the public-facing draft of the master plan and the hearing materials would be published a week before that. In addition to the master plan document itself, there will be a technical appendix, which is entirely compilation of memos and materials that you have seen throughout the months that we've been working together. But it is the background record for it and would be part of the adoption. And then, of course, as a reminder, this is all about the master plan as a first step and the development code. Other implementation, including funding, will occur in the new year. So here's about the shortest version of the master plan overview. It basically is a vision and blueprint for Frog Pond East and South. Wilsonville's tradition of trying to lay out just a little more certainty of the physical planning of its urban expansion areas is a little unique compared to some of the other communities. And so it takes the kind of work and discussions that you've been doing to date to put the flesh on the bones, so to speak, about the master plan. As a legal matter, it is a supporting document of the comprehensive plan and carries the full weight and authority of the plan. That serves a couple of roles. One of the main ones being to enable the development code implementation. We put the draft implementation measure that we're suggesting in the document that's been before you. That's an explicit policy statement. And so these, in the shortest form, are the two key roles of the master plan. The chapters kind of speak for themselves. The first four chapters really are background materials, and the topics that we're going to focus on tonight are largely embodied in Chapters 5, 6, 7, and 8. Heads up, we'll give you an opportunity in a moment to comment on 1 through 4 if you want to do that. Oh, here it is. So before we get into more description of the materials in the master plan, experience would show that you usually do your reading, and we wanted to give you an opportunity for the introduction, the vision statement, the context and setting, or the housing and market summary. Were there any questions or comments to put on the table in those first four chapters? And this is not your last bite at the apple, by the way, but in terms of work session.
I just have random edit comments throughout the document. What's the best way, because I got like two pages of notes. What's the best way to submit? It's like misspellings and capitalizations, and do you just want an email that contains all that?
Yeah, notes are fine. A photograph or a scan of your notes will work, and we'll ask if we can't read something. So.
I will, I will turn it into English.
So my theory with master plan, when I was over there, that was, that was a village. I understand that it was slightly different, but it was, it was much more prescriptive than this document is. And so can you provide a little bit of context? Because now that I'm seeing this layout, I was a little surprised at how it wasn't as prescriptive of what I was expecting.
And can you also make sure you turn on your microphones when you?
Yes, thank you for the reminder.
Miranda, I can start that, if you want to add. There is sort of a development practicality reason for what you see in this master plan as opposed to Vilbois. Vilbois had a single master developer and control over all 300 developable, but 500 acres of the property, and approached that master plan with a very fine grain of master plan layout. So the streets and alleys that were shown on the master plan were largely what were going to be proposed. They evolved a little bit through development review, but that's one example. The housing variety is probably the best example of how, under a single developer, they went all the way down to the lot level on every block. And that, of course, also played out over time with the market. Contrast that with the Frog Pond neighborhoods where, I've lost count, but in East and South, I think there's at least 20 different ownerships. And so they will roll out incrementally over time. And even the larger ownerships will undergo phased type of development. So because it will happen in more steps by more entities over time, these master plans over in the Frog Pond area have more flexibility in them as compared.
That's helpful, thank you.
Okay. Okay, good on the, okay, so we'll move on. Here's maybe just a slightly larger version of the master plan overview. So 15 months of work in one slide. On the right, of course, is the urban form and transportation map that we've been developing over time. It's comprised of framework streets in gray, which are the primary ones that set the bones of the street system. And then you see the white indications for local streets is where the plan is anticipating local street connections, but there's some flexibility for that as more detailed planning gets done. The land uses are very simple in terms of a variety of residential and the neighborhood center, and of course, the open spaces are throughout. So the bullets on the left are kind of the outcomes that are intended by that map and by the entirety of the master plan descriptions. You might remember our discussion of neighborhood destinations, the Grange, the Main Street, the East Neighborhood Park, the existing school, the future community park, and then for those that are walking outside the neighborhood, the primary school and high school and so on. Form-based design and transect, and we've talked a lot about how we have more, more intensive development form in the brown areas, moving to the gold, moving to the yellow. An intentional wide variety of housing, and that will take the form of requirements for a variety of housing. And those details, of course, are yet to be fully worked out. The Brisbane Main Street, parks and open spaces throughout the plan, much like Frog Pond West. These two neighborhoods will enjoy the fact that no matter where you live, you are never more than about a block or two from the closest green space. And that is really a great amenity and part of daily life in these types of neighborhoods. Transportation choices, we have tried to piece together in every way we can. So walking, or rolling, or driving, or how the bus circulates have all been integrated into a network. And then finally, the concept of sub-districts, which are neighborhoods within the neighborhoods. So that's, that's the overview of the plan. And let's, let's now move to the first of our topics, if we could. And somebody's going to have to hit the magic button here to bring Mike Carr on for our presentation.
You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, great. Well, thanks, everybody, for having me on here to talk briefly about stormwater. So, you know, stormwater planning is important for this area in terms of infrastructure. It's a little different than the water and sewer, but, you know, it is governed by particular principles that we have to adhere to that are regulatory in nature. And in the case of Wilsonville, Wilsonville manages their own stormwater infrastructure. It is under an NPDS permit, which is a federal permit that's really coupled with other agencies in Clackamas County. And there has been a, the NPDS permit has been renewed just recently. So it, you know, as these permits get renewed, you know, on, you know, multiple-year occasions, they do come with slightly different conditions. So we do have a renewed permit with new conditions. And from that, the city develops a stormwater management plan that's more specific to the city. And they're in the process of updating that stormwater management plan right now with another consultant looking at a citywide basis and developing, you know, more specific strategies. One of the, really, the, there's really three major principles here that govern what we're going to be doing with stormwater here in Frog Pond or what the developers will be doing as they, as they implement the urban design. And number one, as part of the permit, is implementing what's called low-impact development approaches, and to the maximum extent feasible. And really, what this is, is managing stormwater as close to the location where it's generated. As we convert farmland and agricultural land and open spaces to impervious surfaces of pavement and buildings, it increases runoff substantially. And, you know, this is clearly going to be a major change in terms of the amount of runoff that has to happen. So what the permit requires is to implement these low-impact development approaches, and that's really through the use of rain gardens, infiltrating as much stormwater as possible into the ground. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute to get a little more specifics of what that means here in Frog Pond. But that is really the number-one guiding approach that will be needed to be utilized as they go forward. Another one is to limit the amount of outfalls that discharge into the creeks for the purposes of enhancing or at least maintaining stream health, rather than having a whole lot of different outfalls that really, frankly, could be challenging to maintain, monitor, et cetera. This is a governing principle we have to look at, is limiting the amount of outfalls, really sort of managing the stormwater, but discharging to the downstream creeks in as few locations as we can. And we also have to manage this on a basin by basin, by geographic basin, speaking. It's not so much governed by this development or that development as much as, you know, what has to go to this creek, the Meridian Creek versus Newland Creek, or to this other area. They have to stay, the rainfall has to stay where it's been going historically. So those are the three major items that we have to understand here. So, next slide, please. Thank you. All right, so really just talk about low-impact development approaches. Again, we have to implement these to the maximum extent feasible. They do take space, and they are required to be, you know, the idea is decentralized, they're close to the runoff source, they integrate both treatment, which is required, as well as flow control, reducing the amount, the rate, the quantity of runoff as much as possible. And they do that through infiltration where they can. That, you know, and you've seen them through, you know, such as rain gardens are a very common approach that are done for low-impact development. Bioswales are another method. The challenge that Frog Pond will have, as most developments are having, is particularly with the conflicts of these rain gardens and these, these stormwater facilities with the other things in urban design that are required, and particularly in Frog Pond. You know, you've got street trees, as you guys are going to hear about, there's sidewalks, there's spire hydrants, there's a number of amenities, sidewalks, curb bulbouts, pedestrian crossings, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of various things that have to be programmed into these streets and rights of way, right? And we, we need to incorporate these stormwater facilities as well. And the old urban design, everything went underground, and this is really kind of a newer approach. So we've got to find room and a way to balance this, all these various things. So one of the, you know, we're really working out with, talking with the city about prioritizing how we're going to manage these conflicts. And so what we're looking to do is to, in this plan, set out a list of priorities for developers as they're coming in on how to prioritize locations of LID, low-impact development methods. So on the, so the major roadways, the Collector Streets, the Arterial Streets, Advance Road, Stafford, Southwest 60th, the areas where there's not going to be parking, where there's no parking allowed, that will give more room in the right-of-way to allow rain gardens to go in, whether that's in the median, in the center of the road, or on the side between the curves and the sidewalks. Where there's on-street parking allowed or necessary, that becomes a lot more challenging, right? You know, we just don't have the room. And so when we get into those local areas, we're going to be looking at, really, we're going to be, you know, telling developers they need to be looking at other areas to manage stormwater, and that could be looking at where there might be the ability to do it in an alley, or... or perhaps, you know, in a green way that they're programming into the development. And also curb extensions, those have often been used, where we've got a curb extension for a pedestrian crossing, we can include some landscaping, which is really ultimately a stormwater facility, like a rain garden. We'll also be looking at areas like parks, open space buffers, places where there's already open space where we can manage stormwater in those areas. We're also going to, you know, there's going to be relatively, you know, this is a relatively dense area, in having developers look between buildings, you know, where are their, where are their common areas that they can incorporate facilities? And really, again, we're trying to get the stormwater managed at the source and try to avoid, as much as possible, pushing stormwater down in a pipe, down to the end somewhere where there's another regional, larger regional facility that has to manage it. That's the goal, right? You know, planters adjacent to buildings to manage the building runoff. So that's really the strategy that we're going to be encouraging to this master plan as far as managing stormwater. And you can see the map there that we've got on the right side of the page, which is identifying the various stormwater basins topographically, how they lay out, and identifying what seem to be good opportunities for citing these facilities, where regional facilities might be needed downstream. And we've identified the BPA right-of-way on the north side as potential, at least right on the edge. That has been used successfully elsewhere in the region. And so I know developers will want to be looking to that because it's already open space. So that's really an overview. I'd be happy to take some questions if anybody has any.
My inner geek has a question. And that is, the fact that there's multiple basins in this area, is that helpful? Or does that make it more difficult and more challenging to do the low-impact development approach?
It can be actually helpful in the sense that you're not trying to, you're not having to collect a lot of water and push it into a larger pipe, which then pushes it down to some larger facility. So you're really forced to manage it on a local level, and you're not, you're not looking for some large tract land to have to treat something downstream. That said, you know, individual developers are going to, you know, they might have two different stormwater basins that they have to, they have to deal with, you know? And so that might double the effort that they need to put in to manage stormwater for their piece of property. And that does, that can make things a little bit more challenging. And so sometimes, the way stormwater lays out, the way that topography lays out on a particular piece of land that's going to be developed can dictate how they phase their work.
Thank you.
And that segues into my question. How is the plan going to be built or designed such that it won't be owners to any one lot or subdivision or ownership block?
Well, that's a good question. That is a challenging thing for the city to manage. The idea would be, and each, you know, each basin is, like I said, is going to be a little different. As the framework streets go in, and they will be going in early, they're going to be developing stormwater facilities, particularly to manage the streets themselves. The idea would be, is to encourage development to utilize those streets to also provide the stormwater treatment that can collect the surrounding areas. On an individual lot basis, they will likely need to manage their stormwater. But the idea would be to come up with a basin-wide plan, you know, like I said, basin-by-basin approach. We've got to get an outfall and a conveyance to the outfall that would facilitate those individual owners to be able to develop and connect to that.
I'm not clear whether or not the stormwater facilities are going to be then dedicated to public and managed publicly for maintenance, or how is that handled?
The city has historically utilized, you know, they basically just had HOAs, you know, for management of their own facilities as they need to develop, for, you know, for a particular development property, groups of properties. Where they need to be used, utilized by the public, or are using, are treating public spaces, streets, those will be managed by the city. Those will be owned and managed by the city. A regional facility that is going to be both taking public right-of-way as well as some of these private properties may be managed by the city. It looks like maybe Carrie, I don't know if Carrie wants to say something there, but the particular approach they've had before has been through HOAs.
Before Carrie answers the rest, isn't the NPDS permit issued to the city?
I can describe.
Carrie, you could probably answer that better.
Okay. Carrie Rappel, Natural Resources Manager. So in regards to the first question about the stormwater facilities, even if they're located in the public right-of-way, they're still owned and maintained by that private development. And so we allow the right-of-way to be used for that purpose, but it's still the responsibility of, you know, the HOA maybe, could be an individual property owner, that will ultimately maintain those. So we have, I have an employee that works for me, and she works to get reports every year in regards to those facilities. And we actually report on that with our NPDS permit. And so we're kind of unique in that respect, in terms of some jurisdictions where, you know, probably ninety, ninety-five, maybe more, ninety-nine percent of the stormwater management system in the city, as far as stormwater facilities, are privately owned and maintained. And so we really take responsibility for the conveyance system, the pipes in the streets, or the outfalls where, you know, the stormwater runoff goes. And so it's, you know, it's a lot of work to coordinate that. But the other alternative would be to have a lot more city staff that were involved with, you know, managing these facilities. In regards to the NPDS permit, we're actually one of thirteen co-permittees within Clackamas County. We're kind of a unique Phase One NPDS permit holder, probably within the country. And so collectively, our population rose above that hundred thousand person threshold when you looked at all of us together. So it's like Lake Oswego, Oregon City, Milwaukee, Gladstone, we're all part of this individual permit, but we each have our own responsibilities in regards to that permit.
So how do you make sure that the maintenance is done and the quality of the discharge is up to par?
Really working with HOAs, with individual property owners, having them submit reports every year about what they're doing as far as maintenance, and then going out and inspecting that.
Do you have any sampling?
And we have water quality monitoring that we do, that we're required to do under a permit. It's a little difficult to relate that back to certainly any particular stormwater facility, but it does give us trends, and it does allow us to analyze, you know, what we're seeing in terms of that water quality.
And it's working so far?
I believe so. I think the system we have works really well. I think, you know, there's deficiencies, like any place you could go to in terms of looking at stormwater facilities, but like I said, the alternative would be to have a much more substantial budget in terms of what we have, and more staff, more resources that we'd have to devote to it if we were taking responsibility for all of that.
Yeah, I understand that. My concern is that since the responsibility is so dispersed, essentially, and my own experience is, you know, sometimes HOAs have a hard time figuring out what flowers to plant, much less whether or not, you know, it's worthwhile maintaining the rain garden that is treating their stormwater. I'm wondering whether or not the city is looking down the road, especially as it grows, to where cumulatively you're going to start pushing against your standards and not being able to track it to any one HOA, and not be able to really control it. The nice thing about publicly-owned facilities is that you have one entity that's responsible.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
The buck stops there.
Yeah. I mean, we've, we were actually ahead of the curve in regards to, like, operation and maintenance, and even if you compare it to, like, where they're publicly maintained, we've been doing some of these things since the mid-'90s. And so, but yeah, we've reached a point where, you know, there's over a hundred agreements that we deal with, and it's challenging, you know? So it's, it would have to be kind of a policy-level decision, though, and there would be ramifications if we were to go that route. I personally feel that it still works at the level we're at right now. Now, will it work the same way in five, ten years? That's a good question.
So long as you have an eye on it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, you've got to have an eye and keep tracking things.
Thank you.
It's a good question, though.
And I will say, I've got experience on the HOA side of it, and the city does regularly go and review, and we got notice that we needed to update and maintain our stormwater facilities. So we're, one of the challenges of, on the HOA side, is how do you go do that? Because we're not subject matter experts in stormwater maintenance. And so while it is working on the city's side, it is a little more problematic on the homeowner's side, once you run into that problem of having to do something about your stormwater maintenance facility.
Yeah, and that's where the woman, Sarah Sand, that works for me, she's our stormwater management coordinator, as much as possible, she tries to educate, you know, homeowners at HOAs. You know, we work a lot with just the landscaping companies that are doing this maintenance work, because a lot of it does just come back to the plants themselves. Those are, that tends to be one of the bigger issues in terms of maintaining what's there. And so, yeah, I mean, just that level of education is important on an ongoing basis.
Do you have access to resources, like at the metro or somewhere, with stormwater design experts that can come and troubleshoot and problem-solve with HOAs? Because this stuff gets pretty deep pretty quickly.
Yeah.
It's not only plants, you know, soils could go south, it's all kinds of stuff that can go wrong with any of these facilities, and it requires expertise to be able to problem-solve.
Yeah, there's a number of training programs now that are especially available to landscapers, where they can learn the appropriate ways of maintaining stormwater facilities, especially low-impact development. And so we try to push, you know, as much as we can towards that, where people are getting that level of expertise and level of training. And so it's, like I said, it's an ongoing process, because, you know, sometimes landscapers change, and employees change, and, you know, we face the same thing with our own employees, you know, for the facilities that we do maintain. And so...
Well, this actually is very similar to the conversation we had about the urban forest management.
Yes. There's some similarities, yeah, when it comes to, yeah, what we have to...
You know, you have your arborist that comes and tells the people who are cutting trees how to cut it. And, you know, we're not to cut, we're to cut, you're doing too much, this, that, and the other thing. The HOAs are lost. They need a similar kind of boots on, not just coordinating, but technical, that can show up and say, and inspect, and say, this is your problem, work with landscape contractors and say, do this, do that, do the other thing, and do these experiments to see if it works or not. If you're serious about water quality. Otherwise, it's going to get forgotten. People aren't sophisticated enough to know what these things are supposed to do. So long as the plants grow and flower, they think it's fine.
Sure.
You know, that's...
So just to let you know, with the urban forest management plan, we're starting two projects. One is a tree manual, and it was one of the action items in the management plan. And that will be available to the public, and it'll also help our own staff in terms of some of these issues with trees.
There are any number of stormwater manuals that other municipalities have developed, you know, I'm more familiar with the Midwest. So manuals can't just be imported, it needs to be tied into your weather patterns and rainfall stuff. But it may be something in the future to look at, is to have a stormwater manual that could be the first step for HOAs to use.
Yeah, and just one quick thing, yeah, we developed a low-impact development guide that has fact sheets that are within that, and it was geared to the public in terms of information we can share with them. So Sarah, you know, can make use of that when she's going out to speak with homeowners, with HOAs, with developers. So, yeah, no, definitely as much educational material as we can provide. I hope that answered your questions.
Yeah, sure. So, Mike, couple of questions on my side. You know, one thing that jumped out at the map was the difference, and I couldn't figure out why basin K1 and K2 were separated, and why the distinct size difference between the two. And this is where I was curious as to why K1 even exists, and why it couldn't just be part of K2.
Yeah, I think what we were, I'm trying to recall what the, what exactly what was being thought there, whether it was a phasing such, but you're right, it does all fall into the same designation there of that, what we're calling Colley Creek, I guess, the one to the southeast. And I'm trying to recall if it was a phased, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer for you, it's right off the top of my head, and I can try to find it for you here, but... But yes, it is on the downstream side of things, and I'm just trying to recall whether that was particularly, I just have to get back to you on that, I apologize.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. I did just something that jumped out at me when I looked at the topography of it, and looked like it was all kind of one thing. And then I think the only other thing that I was hoping is if you could provide a little more context around the regional facilities that are proposed, and how they differ from the local control, and what the purposes of those versus the others.
Well, as I was saying, the, you know, the idea is to have low-impact development handled as much as possible. Now, we know that with the amount of impervious areas that are going to be going in, in some cases, it's likely not to be covered. And so to manage stormwater at that point, the developers really need a place to put it, to convey it downstream, but maybe they haven't fully managed the flow control, you know, possibly not the treatment, hopefully the treatment, but at least the flow control, the runoff might be too much relative to what the predeveloped conditions were. And so what we've located with the stars on the map were the idea of potentially a downstream location of some regional facility that may be needed to manage flow control particularly, and also if there's any treatment that also could be incorporated with that, to manage the stormwater and treat it prior to the outfall. Again, it's a second priority, but it does need to be looked at. And so for the upstream areas, really, again, we're trying to, we have to really look at it on a basin-by-basin approach. And so some of the basins, they're going to have the ability to manage stormwater better upstream, and some aren't, you know, or depending on the distance or the amount of area that's included. Just more study really needs to be looked at to identify how much space needs to be incorporated, and really each of the, you know, what do we got? Two, we've got about eight, maybe ten basins that need to be managed. Each one's really got to be approached possibly differently, if that answers your question.
Yeah, so at what point in the process will we have that answer?
Well, typically with stormwater, they get, they really get addressed on a development If you had, you know, and also in regards to the roadways, again, the roadways are going to be typically the first things that are going in, and they're the ones that require the most intensive management of stormwater. So we're going to, so as they come in, and as, really, as they come in to try to understand how to manage stormwater for a roadway, they've got to incorporate the entire basin with an approach. Now, they may be able to just handle the stormwater from the runoff, from the roadway, and understand that each development... and, and understand that each development that hooks into this stormwater line is going to have the ability to manage it on their site. And that may be the case. But what we're trying to do here is, is lay out approaches that the developers won't come in and, and utilize. And, and really with stormwater, you've got, you've got a number of different approaches of how you want to use, or what you want to apply, what you want to build, whether you want to incorporate stormwater facilities into a park area. So that might require a certain kind of method or, or level of intensity that the developers want to have that, particularly, you know, flexibility is where I'm trying to go with that. And so, what, what we're, as we were talking with the city staff, talking through this plan, was being careful not to be too prescriptive about identifying a particular location where a particular facility needed to be. Because I don't think, you know, really, again, as development comes along, you know, really, the plan needs to be flexible from that, from that standpoint, in that we, we don't want to dictate that a, a particular facility needs to be on a particular parcel.
Okay.
I don't know if I answered your question there, or if...
Yeah, I guess I'm still, given the number of developer, or the number of parcels and the, the segmented development that we're going to see, how are you going to know when or whether or not a regional facility is going to be needed? I guess that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So I can add a little bit here, I think Miranda Bates Shaw, Planning Director with the City of Wilsonville. A lot of it really does happen at the development proposal stage. And that's because a lot of the calculation is dependent upon impervious surface that is added, and therefore, what stormwater runoff is going to occur, and how does, where does that need to go, and how does it need to be treated along the way? And we primarily want to do that on-site. So we really, during the development review process, push applicant teams not to provide regional facilities. And so, we, even on our large industrial sites, we will have multiple stormwater LED facilities, lighted facilities, to help deal with the flow control and the treatment as close to the source as possible. So really, when we get to the regional discussion, it's because we've identified that it potentially can't all occur on, in those kind of separate areas and all localized. We think that's possible here because we have some of these small parcels, and we've called for densities in some of those areas where we have smaller properties. And the roads are going to not necessarily have, be able to have the lighted facilities along the road, because we're either calling for parking or something else, we want street trees, like, there's a lot of things that compete for the space along a road, and not just stormwater facilities. And so, we're starting to look at where might those areas be, and call it out on the map now, so that we're thinking about it and trying to plan for it where we can. And so, that's why let's make sure that there's some facilities that are in the BPA easement if we can, because that's an area that we can take advantage of and provide a larger space there, and it won't consume land elsewhere. Similar on 60th to the south, likely we're not going to be able to have all of that in the roadway or along the street frontage, based on some of the cross-sections you'll see. And so, we're looking at what is the opportunity to provide it at the corner of the school property or in the park to help if we do, in fact, need that regional facility. Did that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up. The low-impact development approach is a great strategy. Having in your back pocket sites for regional facilities for the long run is also an excellent strategy, because water quality standards change, climate is changing, we don't know what we're going to be dealing with in 50 years. Once a developer is finished doing whatever they're doing on that parcel, you aren't going to be able to do much by increasing the treatment capability of, of that facility on the margins, but really not if the water quality improvement that is being required for the healthy fisheries downstream or whatever are orders of magnitude of increased water quality. So having room for stormwater facilities, regional downstream, even if it's not right away, just in case down the road you need it, is an excellent and, and I think required in this day and age strategy, because we're dealing with very unpredictable climate response to what's happening. Now, you know, I don't know whether we're going to get drier here or wetter, but it's getting more extreme is the issue. And so, your facility that could deal with six months of drizzle, all of a sudden may have to deal with a downpour over two weeks. And it will not be able to handle it, and, you know, the standards will follow whatever nature is doing, not necessarily where you painted yourself in a corner. So regional facilities, I think, need to be Plan B for future stormwater plan updates.
Well, I, I think we may have addressed this slide already.
Well, that was just warm. Okay, okay to move on then, is what I'm taking, okay? Let's, let's move to transportation. And the first of the topics is the active transportation plan, the walking, biking, and rolling component. The map on the right implements the outcomes shown in the bullets by buffered bike lanes, that's what the, the double green lines are on selected streets, designated shallow streets where bikes, if they're not on the, in the buffered lanes, the painting on the street will indicate, go this way. And so, there's a connected system of that. The crossings of 60th, excuse me, the crossings of Advance have been coordinated with those facilities to make sure it's safe when you're getting from point A to point B. And all of this is connected to the trail system, which we've been looking at on the maps for many months. There is one trail, I want to point out, that's new. It's, it's kind of subtle, you may not have seen it in the material. But along the south edge of Meridian Creek School property, we connected the trail all the way over from the left, where it meets the creek, and would cross over to the other side to 60th in an intentional way. There's also a little white arrow that a, a street would be drawn there, so, built there. So it, the, the, the trail would take the form of a 12-foot wide pathway at the edge of that particular property. That's just one, one new item to, to call out. The other rationale for this plan that we wanted to highlight is on the next slide. This is all helpful to the Safe Routes to School movement. The actually officially designated Safe Routes to School are, are of course done by the school district. But at the land use planning level, what we've tried to do is basically provide every tool and, and every safe kind of strategy that would work with that system. So they'll identify the specifics, but the plan is anticipating all of those techniques that are shown on the previous slide. So we, we have some other slides on streets themselves, but let's stop here and, and see if there was something on the active transportation plan. And maybe if we could go back to the, two slides to the map. If you like it, it's okay to say you like it.
I like it.
Looks like no questions at this time on this one. Let's, let's go on to streets themselves, which of course incorporates the active, but we have some specific things to show you here. And I think I'll go through these and then Jenna, and we, we have our colleague Ken Perry on the line, that can also add for anything I overlook as I go through. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through about eight slides here. The transportation system plan, as you know, includes a functional classification of streets. And so, from Stafford as an arterial to what we call collector gateways, which is Advance and 60th north of Advance. That's a, a term of classification that actually comes from Frog Pond West. And I'll show you the cross-section in a moment, but it's, it's a little bit more of a friendly collector, I guess is one way you could put it, with a median in the middle. A collector street cross-section for 60th south of Advance, and then the network of local streets. And then we have some specific mid-block connections here that, let me point out the, the ones, and Jenna, you can help me. But there will be a pedestrian-activated beacon-type arrangement midway between 63rd, which is the entrance to the school. So if you could go down to the, there's 60th, and then 63rd is there. So halfway between that crossing and 60th itself will be a pedestrian crossing. And then, that is the only mid-block one, if I'm recalling correctly. But of course, all the intersections have controls and design for pedestrians as well. Okay? Here's just another version of kind of the street hierarchy from Stafford at the largest volume to all of the other streets. All of them intended to be walkable streets, but they do carry a different function locally and, and as they, they serve the neighborhoods. So some cross-sections to show you. This is a cross-section that was not in your document. It will be in the next version. This was developed as part of Frog Pond West. We have made, I think, a very small refinement to the buffered bike lane to ensure that it's the nine-foot standard that is used today. I think that was the update. But basically, this is a planted median approach to Stafford Road with generous buffers that are planted on either side. The bike lane that is inside of the buffer, so it's not commingled next to the travel lanes. And then a, another buffer before you get to the private development on either side. So you've seen this start to emerge on Beckman, on the north side of Beckman, where these same elements are done, but with slightly different dimensions. And that, that street, of course, is not fully developed at this time. And the other characteristic of this design is that it basically results in a double row of trees under the walking and biking area on either side of Stafford Road. So we're trying to tame Stafford and, and make it the kind of walkable place, at least as it can be in its functional as a, as a fairly high-volume street. Southwest Advance, you have seen this cross-section before. So we're looking west in this view, park on the left, front doors on the right, and buffered bike lanes adjacent to the, the travel lanes. We have some coordination with the fire district to, to do, to talk through this cross-section, to get it to full support by them. But we're, we think we're on the right track with that. And again, planted median and planted either side. Let's keep going through, and then we can come back to any of these that you want to talk about. 60th north of, of Advance Road, there was a comment along in one of your work sessions of, wouldn't it be wonderful to have kind of a boulevard approach to that street? And so, we ran with that idea. And this is the gateway collector cross-section that has a planted median. You might be familiar with the portion of Willow Creek that has been built north of Beckman. Willow Creek is, of course, is existing south of Beckman, but as it enters into Frog Pond West, it's got the median treatment. And this is sort of a mirror to that same thing, buffered bike lanes incorporated with the street design. South, we've made a couple of different choices here for your consideration. Rather than the continuous median, because we have such a long public frontage for the community park and the school property, we've gone with a little bit more standard collector cross-section, but increased the sidewalk to a 12-foot wide sidewalk on the public side, so to speak, the west side of the street. So we anticipate that your fast bike riders are in the, the buffered bike lanes, and your walkers and your kids on little bikes and so on are probably in that 12-footer. But more, more prominence to the pedestrian on the public side. We showed you this cross-section before for Brisbane Main Street. It is a very intentionally pedestrian-oriented layout with the curb extensions, the travel lanes are downsized to 10 feet, on-street parking, generous sidewalks at 15 feet. And you'll notice in the little diagram to the right that it's actually intended to be extended all the way east to the park. We sort of went through a little work session of how would we make that transition to change it, and realized, why change it? It's best to have it be continuous and make the connection between the park destination and this commercial mixed-use destination with a consistent streetscape throughout. So that's, that's the plan for Brisbane Main Street. And then one last slide to show you here. This is a little site study that we've done, which gives you just the overhead view of not only the streets, but how buildings would frame the main street along the first two blocks, and how some plaza areas and some public areas would be incorporated with parking behind the buildings. So I know I went through a lot there. Let me first invite Jenna. Were there any kind of network things to mention or elements I didn't?
No. I need to go over it all.
Okay. Ken Perry, are you on the line?
I am, yeah.
Ken?
The only thing I would ask, Joe, is we made a note on this plan that we're showing surface parking lots behind these new buildings along the main street. And we know this is, is subject to a developer's more detailed study, but that could potentially also be future development sites as well. So there could be more capacity than what's shown. But what we were trying to show here was primarily how that main street is framed by buildings that could be up to four stories high and creating a lot of public space and a real sense of enclosure there.
One other circulation element I'll mention here in terms of kind of layout is, what's not shown is at the bottom of the screen, kind of how this two-block area connects to the properties to the south of it. And adjacent to Stafford, there is a long and skinny component of the Azar property. It's, it's a little bit of a challenging one, you have to get, get streets to it. And it does not include the, what we call the cell tower property that's right next to it. Someday, all of that will be connected and so on. But I'm mentioning this because there will have to be a, a circulation that gets from up here down to that Stafford sort of stem of the ownership. Okay, so we can go back through any of these, Chair and Commissioners, or go, or walk back through them one at a time, however you'd like to handle it.
In taking a second look at this from when it was originally discussed, I'm noticing that the south section of Southwest 60th looks like it's going to invite speed demons. And there's no traffic calming features along that section. And it's, it's a, it's a residential along a school. And every other, even the arterial streets and the collector streets all have traffic calming. So that's just something to consider, because it's so straight and flat that it just seems like it could be a problem.
Yeah. We, we do have cross-streets that will be connecting from the east, but the point is very... very well-taken, actually, that, and I don't know, Jenna, if you have anything to add, that there would be part of traffic calming toolkit?
I would just say the buffered bike lanes will help. I mean, that's a 11-foot travel lane. The buffers will really help slow things down, to kind of visually provide that space that drivers shouldn't be in within. So, yeah, I, but I get it. It is straight, and I think that is a valid concern.
I'm making a note that we take a second look at that and see if we can bring back Any other of the cross-sections or larger street kinds of issues here that come to mind?
All right, I'll go. Okay, so on the transit image, and this is related to, to SMART, and, and the way you've got it identified for SMART's potential circulation. So is, is that correct, that SMART is not planning to go into Frog Pond West, and that they would go into east and south, and that's it?
That is how we've drawn it to date. There was a check-in, I believe, with SMART along the way. It's been some months. But we better, unless I'm looking around to the team, but we better follow up.
Yeah, it just seemed kind of odd, looking at it, and, you know, you've got two-thirds of a new neighborhood serviced by SMART, but then the other third isn't. And I was curious as to why that is the case. Let's see, and then the, the next one, looking at the, the street images for Stafford and Advance, I noticed that the power lines are shown in both of those. So is the plan that those power lines will remain on both of those streets above ground?
Yeah, we, we're a bit stuck with them, because they have high-voltage wires. And the, the coordination for Beckman's version of that was that they can be moved, but they can't be put underground for that reason.
So all other utilities or any other power that's there will be undergrounded? It will just be the high voltage that will not?
It's one wire that's right up at the top of those poles that you see. It doesn't look very high voltage, but it's there.
So there's no high voltage in Villebois or any of the other developments where everything else is underground?
Not being an engineer, or someone who works for Public Works, I won't say that definitively. I think that part of this is because they're pre-existing. But I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
I'm not sure where all in the community we have high-voltage lines and, and their situation or not.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
While you're on this, while you're on this image, I wanted to mention that it seems like this is also an opportunity to expand the, to two-lane roads or a four-lane road if, if ever needed, hopefully many, many, many years down the road? Because Stafford is going to be the road that wants to expand to a wider road. So is that part of the plan here? That could be expanded to a wider road?
I'll start. Theoretically possible. The intent of the plan is that Stafford would not be widened, that it is the three-lane, or two-driver, but three-lane gateway into the city. And that the, the volume of traffic is managed through the two roundabouts at Colley and Brisbane. I suppose the four-way signalized intersection as well, and the collection of other facilities. One other point is, we did run the traffic analysis for a what-if scenario. If the Frog Pond East and South were to develop substantially more than what we have planned. We've planned 1,600 units. We analyzed it 1,800. We asked the what-if question at 2,400. And getting up towards 2,400, correct me if I don't say this right, that's where you tip the scales to needing the larger five-lane facility. And it's just not part of the vision.
And then the last one, I'm glad you're on this one as well. What, what's the driver of having the separated bike lane in lieu of a buffered bike lane adjacent to the travel lane? And the reason why I ask that is Wilsonville Road is a, not a buffered bike lane, but a bike lane. And so the transition for me as a, as a bike rider is always an area that I'm interested in. And so trying to understand why we wouldn't maintain the consistency or closer to the consistency of what Wilsonville Road has already, and stay with more of a buffered bike lane approach, instead of, of having a, a separated bike lane.
Yeah, I actually don't remember the original rationale. I don't know if Jenna or Ken have a, have a comment on that. One thought on the, on the east side is that what we're looking at here as the sidewalk there would sort of be where the Advance wider sidewalk comes around and connects to it. That doesn't handle the bikes, but it's also separated.
Okay.
Anything to add to that?
Well, I know we talked about that just at our last meeting on Friday. And I know Public Works is fine with it being adjacent to the travel lane, but this was shown this way, because this is the more desirable setup for it to be more separated from the travel lane and on the opposite side of that planner. I'm, you know, it's, it's just going to provide more comfort for drive, for bicyclists to have that further separation from the cars, while still providing the same connectivity and access. But I don't know, Miranda, if you want to speak to that as well?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is, part of the conversation has to do with some connections to the schools, right? We have a primary school that'll be going into Frog Pond West, as well as the middle school and the connections there. And so we're trying to create more separation and safety between the travel lane and the kids who might be using these sidewalks or bike lanes to travel to and from school. And so it is more desirable, especially depending on, I mean, I know we're adding the roundabouts and the crosswalks to increase safety, but this further increases safety by not having them right adjacent to the roadway.
Okay.
But kids wouldn't travel down Stafford. Kids would have a tendency to go to Advance. If they're going to the middle school in Beckman, if they're going... As a parent, I wouldn't have my kid go to Stafford Road and ride a bike down it, if they're going to school. I'd have them take neighborhood streets until I got to Advance or Beckman.
Right, but this, so depending on where you are in all three neighborhoods, will probably depend on which collector or arterial you end up on, that you have to cross to then get to Advance and to the school if you're going to the middle school.
Yeah, but I still wouldn't go down Stafford.
I can add a little bit. In Frog Pond West, we don't have that part of the map on here, but if you can picture the blocks that are just on the west side of the church, those actually were very intentionally made to be porous, north to south, so that the kids that are living up in those areas can go directly to Beckman. And then Beckman to Advance. And there's pedestrian breaks in the wall and, and some, some elements that we're anticipating trying to get kids to Beckman, as opposed to out to Stafford.
Makes sense.
Okay, all right, so that covers streets. Let's go to the next topic, which I think we're going to turn it over to Ken. Yeah, so let's, I want to introduce Ken Perry. He's with Walker Macy, has been with us actually on all of the area planning and master planning for these neighborhoods. And so he's going to take us through streets, lighting, and gateways.
Thanks, Joe. Hi, everybody. So I'll talk about trees, lighting, and gateways, as Joe mentioned. There's some quick highlights on the slides, but I'll just talk through some other issues that sort of complement these talking points. But I think it's worth pointing out an overall goal or concept for street trees are to beautify and unify the neighborhood, and also provide variety of tree species, which is important for biodiversity. And I think another key point is that we want to integrate with Frog Pond West. So this feels like it's closely connected in terms of its identity. We've got a number of different types of street tree conditions. Just going down the list, the primary streets, they're, that's Advance and 60th. And those are intended to, the street trees there should provide a clear identity to the neighborhood. That's where you're going to get the largest, tallest shade trees. There should be a sense of continuity along those streets as part of the wayfinding and identity for that. The trees that we think about on that list, and in fact, all of the trees on this come from the city's recommended street tree list. And we've actually looked at that list and provided some updates, because just over time, there's new intel about how trees are performing in terms of their sort of resilience to disease, if they're considered invasive, or if they're prone to breaking. So we've tweaked the city's street tree list for, for all of the streets shown, but particularly for the primary list. So going down the list, then the, the southwest Brisbane Main Street, that's a, a, a key sort of unique street tree planting, because you want it to provide a clear identity for that main street. But because, as I mentioned earlier, it's sort of this enclosed, cozy, walkable, pedestrian-friendly space, we're going to look to have narrower, taller columnar trees in that area. So much less of a spread, and something that doesn't necessarily conflict with storefronts, so that you can have clear visibility from people passing by the main street into storefronts. And similarly, we don't, we want to pick tree species there that minimize leaf litter and debris, because they're falling on sidewalks, and we just want to make sure that that's easy maintenance. And you have neighborhood streets, which are the, the majority of the, the streets in the plan. The key point to make about that is that those should have consistent trees on both sides of each block. There'll be a variety across the study area, but it's really important to have consistency on, on both sides of one street. And then we have pedestrian connections. And the key, just a simple point to make about that, that's the blue streets. They're going to be really narrow, so the trees there are also going to be these columnar narrow species. I should also point out that these aren't considered street trees, but you're very familiar with Villebois. And Villebois has done a great job of incorporating existing trees into street trees, but also in groves throughout the neighborhood. So we've identified where significant trees are in the study area with the help of the arborist. So it'd be interesting to try to incorporate those in creative ways into the streets.
Ken, if I could add?
So I guess I can go through all of the categories, and then we can come back to questions?
Ken, I'll just add one point to the street tree plan. We do have a local street connection going from the Grange over to the Colley Road area, but I'm pretty sure you're not allowed to plant street trees in the BPA easement there. So that's, that's a special condition. Yeah, Ken, keep going. We'll go through all three slides and then bring it back for questions and discussion.
Okay. So for public lighting, just the overall idea and concept is we want to enhance neighborhood livability, provide nighttime safety and vitality. The focus should be even, consistent lighting coverage, improving visibility and avoiding excess lighting. So really, the, the next step in this is more detailed lighting plans developed by engineers with specialty in that, but following that overall guidance. You may, you're probably well-familiar with the concept of lighting zones that are across the city. This area isn't yet covered by a lighting zone, but it would likely be an LZ2, which is low-density suburban neighborhoods. And most of the lighting would be in ornamental fixtures. The only cobra heads would be located on the primary lighting streets, that brown street that's shown. There's also some, just some great detail in the city's code about how to try to get dark-skY-friendly fixtures and, and cap light escape into the sky. The, the idea of a hierarchy is also here, as it is for street trees. And there's, it's a subtle hierarchy that you see with lighting, starting with the arterials that I mentioned, the primary lighting. That's going to be the brightest standard for vehicular movement. And again, that's the only place where you would have cobra heads. It's also important, you see the stars that we've noted on those primary streets. Those are key intersections. So there was, those are key transitions between the urban arterial vehicular and neighborhood-scale lighting to each side. So it should be carefully coordinated, so there's no visual conflicts between those two types. But intersections should also be brightly lit, because that's, that's serving as a beacon. And as with the next topic, that's part of the gateway experience for these street, for these streets. Gateways include lighting inherently. So just going down the list, the main street type of lighting, that's going to be a closer spacing of a lighting type, again, with an ornamental fixture. It should provide a really intimate scale, because we're trying to encourage activity into the night, if there's dining or other uses there, to just encourage pedestrian activity. The other thing about the main street is that we'd like to include the possibility to put banners on the, on the light poles. Similarly, maybe there's a, a chance to have seasonal lighting of trees on those areas. So that's kind of this additional layer of lighting that exists. The other point maybe to make, local streets are just, that's a pretty basic idea, that you just want to provide minimum light levels for safe circulation. You don't want that to be too bright. And that, you have consistent pedestrian connections are also important to the neighborhood's identity. And you want to make that safe for people, especially kids, to use throughout the day. So you should have uniform illumination of pedestrian connections. So I'll move on to gateways, since we've sort of introduced. And there's, again, a hierarchy of gateways. So there's four distinct types that we've shown. A key point to make is that, sort of the conceptual entry into the city of Wilsonville, which now is considered Beckman, Advance, and Wilsonville, that's going to shift north, so that you're coming down Stafford, and when, when you are crossing that BPA easement, that's where the, the initial gateway of welcoming you into the city of Wilsonville should be. Similarly, from the east, that shifts further east to the UGB boundary, east of 60th. So again, that's another welcome to the city of Wilsonville. I guess, say if someone's coming from the Candy Ferry or the backroads from, from Westman. The next, I'll, I'll jump down to the Brisbane Street, Main Street, because I think that's a key marker and a key gateway. You might remember from the other sketch that Joe showed earlier, that that intersection could include a roundabout. So that's a, a great opportunity to include a significant vertical art piece or some sort of special landscape. And that can help to mark that as a gateway into Frog Pond East, as well as sort of part of that integrated set of gateways along Stafford. There's two green neighborhood gateways that are shown, the one in the north at Frog Pond Lane and the one at 60th and Advance. Those are key, those are gateways, but they're also key connection points. So those serve that dual feature. The one on 60th is sort of the, the connection or the link between Frog Pond East and Frog Pond South. And it's also tied into good pedestrian connections, that could be the adjacency to the parks, transit routes, other aspects like that. The other, I guess the final key point to make would be that when we're looking at gateways, we're also looking at monuments and signage. And as with Frog Pond West, this shouldn't feel like it's a bunch of, it's a multiple subdivisions all locked together. This should feel like a cohesive community that's being built incrementally, but that feels like it's got the same identity. Any, that's, any other questions or comments, thoughts?
I have a question about the street tree plan. Just kind of thinking back to that ice storm we had a few years ago. How does durability and hardiness go into that updated list that you've made, and how much consideration is given to that when you're planning something like this?
That's a good question. I'd probably have to ask our in-house tree experts or the arborists to get an expert answer on that. But I, I do think that's a consideration when street tree lists are provided. But I do think that's a consideration when street tree lists are provided. But that's such a special case. I don't know if it's possible to guard, to prevent that completely, you know what I mean?
I'd be happy to provide a little bit more context. We have done some assessment of the street tree inventory. So after the ice storm, there, we had done a street tree inventory a couple of years prior, just as an asset inventory. And so after the ice storm, we actually partnered with Public Works. Public Works hired two interns to go out and update the street tree inventory. We could share results of that with you. I believe some of that information was made public to the council. But from that, we did learn a little bit about what trees were more impacted than other trees. And so the team, Public Works Planning and Natural Resources Manager, we've been meeting regularly since the ice storm and in partnership with the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And so we have integrated that information into the list that we've provided. So we have, in terms of the species that are provided here, we have refined some of those lists and not included trees we used to include that might be more susceptible as we move forward in climate change. That said, you know, these issues are constantly changing, but we are, we are responding to them as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
And so Miranda, it sounds like these aren't a direct carryover from the trees in Frog Pond West. There's been some analysis to determine whether they're still suitable?
I believe so. I guess I didn't do a comparison straight to Frog Pond West to see if, if we had them in that plan already and then remove them when we put this tree list together. But this tree list was reviewed by staff in terms of what we would want to call for on our street trees.
Okay. Great.
One of my suggestions or questions is if we wanted to incorporate a drip system for flowering planters along Main Street, where does that get incorporated, something like that? Is that even incorporated in the master plan or is that too detailed?
I mean, I would lend to say it's detailed, but it would typically be done at like a streetscape planning-type level. But if a priority could be mentioned in the plan? Do you have additional?
There's no, there's no preclusion. I mean, the master plan is an ideas book as much as it is a directive outcome book or, you know, regulatory function. So, you know, if I think about where I know that those programs are done, like Lake Grove and downtown Lake Oswego, it's very much programmatic at the city level, as opposed to finding it in their comprehensive plan.
I guess my only thought is, is we've explicitly called out the idea of being able to hang banners. And so, you know, that seems like a comparable thing. It's a, it's a way to distinguish the area. And so it doesn't seem like a horrible idea to have that as an option in the Main Street And then I think, Miranda, this one's probably going to be down your alley. So what do we have in our code for ensuring that lighting at the neighborhood street level is functional? I know we've talked about it in years past and the challenges of developing a street tree plan. And then at implementation, you have a street tree that's too close to the lighting, so the lighting isn't very functional because it's blocked by the tree. Do we have things in our code right now that talk to that and help to ensure that we have that spacing, or is it all part of plan review?
It's primarily a part of plan review. And it's something that is constantly evolving, especially as we have a lot of lighted facilities on our street. And so the, the constant balance between curb cuts and lights and trees and lighted facilities, there's a lot of things to be provided in that. We are trying to balance, for example, on the Main Street, what type of trees we're calling for in relationship to the type of lighting we're calling for and the spacing. So we do have some spacing standards for both, and then we try to balance that at site plan review.
Okay.
Okay, moving on then. So I'm going to take us home here with some of the comprehensive plan-related items. The adoption of the master plan will amend the city's comprehensive plan map. And it'll apply the residential neighborhood designation to most of Frog Pond East and South. It'll apply commercial to the two-block area that is for the Brisbane Main Street. There will also be amendments to the transportation system plan that will be made to incorporate basically all the slides we just looked at. That's opposed to zoning, which is done at a subsequent property-by-property annexation and development review time in the future. The comprehensive plan, of course, has policies and implementation measures. This is the bullet form of a east and south implementation measure that basically tries to list the types of things that the plan is enabling to occur at the code level and as the plan is used. So it's explicit about, we've mapped sub-districts. It's explicit about the categories of housing. We mentioned clearing objective standards for variety here, just because there's a spotlight on it right now and we wanted to make sure that we carried that through. But there's also flexibility that you can get through discretionary review process. So a two-path system is what the plan is acknowledging. And you can see the list of kind of coordination and kind of study-oriented items that are over on the right. I don't want to shortchange the infrastructure funding plan. That is really the heart of the matter. And so, starting in January and taking you through to, I guess, April or May, you'll be looking at all the details and evolution of that component directly after adoption. The zoning, you might have noticed that there's a zoning equivalence table that is in the plan document. The point I wanted to make about this is that over on the right, where we reference that the residential neighborhood zone will be used, the planned development commercial zone will be used, those will be tailored for usage in east and south. So it's not as, exactly as written today, but we'll be adding some things and taking some things out to match the vision for the plan. I think the rest is pretty self-explanatory there. Housing variety, we have captured the discussion that you had last month in the form of what the plan calls six strategies. So the six strategies are the items that you expressed support for. And when we got to City Council Monday of this week, they had a similar level of support for these items. And because we're just giving you the short form here, I want to make sure that you know that we've captured the subtleties like the number of categories of housing on small properties are different than they are on big properties. And the details that we talked about last time are summarized in the master plan. The housing categories themselves, of course, will be left at the framework level in the master plan and for detailed discussion to follow. Next slide, please. Okay. So of the things that you saw in the chapter or that I just talked about, what questions or comments do you have? Okay.
I can make something up, but-
We know that.
Absent those, we're moving on to public comments, so. Okay. I think we might, oh, well, let's see. I just wanted to open it up. Were there any other items, if there was a list of typos that you found, they're welcome? So chapters five through eight, is there anything that we haven't mentioned in this discussion that you wanted to make sure got expressed tonight?
I was curious about the BPA easement. And so we have recommendations in there of how it could be used with the network of trail systems or open space. But is there any teeth to make sure that a developer doesn't want to use the BPA easement as RV storage for an HOA? I mean, do we have anything that can, you know, prohibit certain functions so that way it is prioritized for public space?
So I can respond a little bit in that it is an easement, BPA's easement. Any use that's going to occur within that site has to be arranged with them. So that has to be something that they agree upon. And so that is not a use that they would agree to.
Oh, okay.
We've had conversations with them about what we've been outlining in the plan so far. They're generally uses that they support. They've seen some of the initial conceptual, just high-level drawings that are in the master plan that they also support. There's just going to be some restrictions, particularly around height, but then also a radius around each of the footings of each of the towers to ensure that there's security for their facility as well and access. So anything that would be put in there, if there is any equipment underground, would have to be something that they could dig up if they need to and get underground. And so we'd have to be doing a lot more detailed coordination with them when we got to, well, where would a path or a trail go, where would a lighted facility go, and try to avoid putting it above any of the equipment that they have underground. And then also having the appropriate spacing from the footing of the towers. But any uses like that would have to be organized with them and a part of the, in easement agreement, since it's their easement.
I see. Would community garden be something that they would generally be opposed to? Or, and if not, should we put community garden, add it to the list of potential uses just to bring it more top of mind of the developer?
Yeah, I mean, we could put it in that list. And worst-case scenario is at the point you go to talk to them, if you bring it up and they don't allow it, then it's not allowed. But something that we put in there as a priority discussion item would be absolutely fine for us to add to the master plan. We didn't ask them specifically in the meeting we already had, but we can follow up with them.
Good. Thank you.
I think all we had was maybe, let's go to just next steps. We said this earlier, we will be back to City Council on the 7th for a similar session as this, shorter time period, prior to your public hearing. So that's all we have. And if you wanted to move to public comment, suggestion would be that we move and we can make this a testimony table and go with that as the next step.
I guess, Miranda, the, I guess the question I would have is, has the staff, it sounds like the staff has done some research into this, responded back. Is there anything that you want to say about the, the public comments that we've received?
I don't know how much research staff has done. We received the comments on Friday. I'm not sure that many of it, given City Council on Monday, there wasn't a lot of time. But one of the, what I can say is I did respond because I had gotten the information request, read it, we forwarded it to the Planning Commission. And one of the questions I have is whether or not a designated, it needs to be a designated change from type two to type one along Stafford, because from the description provided in the letter, it felt like it met the type of housing and the form of housing that we've been discussing as type two housing, or housing that would be allowed in type two. And so I just followed up, asking for potentially photographs, images of like products that the, the development team is envisioning, potentially putting along Stafford that is behind their request. That way we could see those visually, understand, does that fit with what the Planning Commission and community has been discussing? When we, as a community, determined to put type two along Stafford, there was discussion about that. There were, when we went through the various developments, I don't know if they were called development scenarios, or the different kind of options for, for the land use and the form and how we want the transect to play out, there were various options that were considered by the community and by the commission and a lot of discussion about which of those and where do we want to center like the most dense buildings or the most dense housing and how do we want that to fan out within the community? And there was a lot of discussion about that central location around the park, having that kind of closer in central along Brisbane, because you will have the Main Street with the tallest, but that those would be distinct from housing along Stafford. So you would have kind of that distinction. And I remembered that being a part of the conversation that was had at Planning Commission. And so I knew that you would be wanting to understand how that compares to what is being provided in the testimony and in the request. And so that's, I essentially just responded, asking for images or pictures so that that could be better understood to figure out, are we talking about the same thing? Are we not? And so therefore, what does that mean for the potential request? And for you to have more information in front of you to be able to consider this request when you hear these public comments. Hopefully that captures, okay.
That's good.
So, and then, so we received that all at the same time right here at 5:45. Which is great. It was very responsive of them, considering I was not able to respond until Tuesday. So kudos to AKS and West Hills for being able to put this in front of us tonight. I appreciated the quick response.
All right. So I guess I'll open it up. Is there a public comment that is desired?
Can we do a, a break?
Yes. Let's break until 7:50. All right. I call the meeting back to order at 7:50 PM. Before we get started with the public testimony, do you want to remind the audience that they will need to fill out a testimony card and that they need to state their name and address for the record? Or they can state that their address is as provided on the testimony card for the record? Take it away.
Oh, no. Now it's on. Good evening. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of West Hills Development. Should be a familiar face for you by now. We appreciate the back and forth with staff and the back and forth with the planning commission. And we're talking about the same topics that we talked about a few weeks ago. Following staff's advice, we did want to provide you with some more documentation that gives you an image of why we are requesting what we're requesting, some of the context of it. They are all very preliminary. These are not necessarily the architectural styles. They're more of urban form and scale. Just to give you a sense of, again, the form and scale of what we're even talking about and how it might transition. So we are still not 100% sure how this is all going to get implemented and what the rules are going to be. So we're still a little feeling it out on type one, type two, type three. Our main feedback, though, is along Stafford Lane, or along Stafford Road, excuse me. West Hills desires to put garden-style apartments, so three-story apartments. We think that that is a good transition from the main street, which would be a four-story structure with retail mixed use on the main floor and three stories of residential above. So we think physically that still matches the transect that has been talked about. And our concern with the type two designation is that it says it is a two-story urban form with the option of a third story for certain state-mandated housing types. And we're not clear if those garden-style apartments fall under that category. So there is a level of uncertainty, which developers do not like uncertainty. I'm not sure anybody likes uncertainty, except maybe at Halloween. So if we had the level one, we would have more assurance that that three-story structure was anticipated by everybody involved. So that is why we'd like to go ahead and change that urban form designation along Stafford Road to the type one. As we look through the descriptions in the master plan document about type one, type two, type three, it does sound like we can live with the type one designation around the park. So we went ahead and pulled that out of our request. We're still guessing, once the rules come out, we might still be waving our arms there and saying, ah, this isn't what we wanted to build. But as far as we can tell, that's something that we can live with. As Mr. Dills pointed out, particularly along Stafford Road, and you can see in the exhibits, the team has added our wetland that we have in that, next to the cell tower property. And so you can see that there is that narrow strip of land that is not conducive to traditional block patterns. Access is going to be extremely challenging through there. And that's part of why we think the garden apartments is a good urban form, good design option for that piece. And so if that goes with garden apartments, it's going to be a little strange to have garden apartments south of the main street on Stafford and not have them north on Main Street, or north of Main Street along Stafford. We think that consistent streetscape is a good thing. If we look at what's on the Frog Pond West side of Stafford Road, you've got the church, you've got some out parcels. It's not a consistent streetscape. As you move further north, you've got new development, you've got the Frog Pond Ridge, you've got Frog Pond Crossing. They've got the Frog Pond elements. You know, they've got the brick wall, they've got homes that are designed with a proper orientation to Stafford. That's a little bit different. To the south, it's a little more piecemeal. So I think it gives the community more flexibility for how we treat that area. The other piece that I'm a little concerned about, or West Hills and I are concerned about, is the language in the plan about variety of housing types within each block. That is still a really hard design component to implement. We can do, just based on the logistics of how a block works, you've got a single dimension of depth. You know, a lot of homes are on 100-foot lot depths. And so it's hard to change from a town home that might have 85 feet of lot depth to a single-family home that might have 100-foot lot depth. That depth just doesn't move across a rectangular block. And frankly, there's just a lot of opinions about whether variety should be at a block level or should it be a community level? Or should it be lot by lot? And there's just a lot of opinions. It's very, very subjective. So we have real concerns about how we can implement that, particularly as we get into that type one urban form. We can't put a garden apartment, or we don't think it's good design to do, a garden apartment and then a single-family detached house and then a townhouse and then a garden-style apartment. That's just, it's disjointed. So we'd like to do that consistent garden-style apartment along Stafford Road. Other feedback within the master plan document itself, I apologize, I haven't had a lot of time to review it. But part of my feedback is that, for example, figure 15 is titled as Frog Pond East and South Master Plan, but the total document is called Frog Pond East and South Master Plan. So when I had tech edit review my first letter, we were going back and forth about what I was referring to, whether it was this map or whether it's this notebook. So I would recommend you change the title of this land use document, this map right here. I also think your legend needs a little more descriptive. We've all been talking about type one, type two, type three. A stranger who picks up this document and flips to this map is not going to have a clue what type one, type two, type three are, that those are urban form designations. So something, a subheading within the legend to say, hey, these are urban form, would be helpful. The sub-districts are probably going to be a little bit of a challenge the way they're currently designed. Right now, for the AZR property, they run north-south. We have blocks that run north-south. You can see in our sketch, which is an early sketch, but we have development that moves from a development type on the west side of the AZR property. We have a bit of a different housing type that's in the middle of the AZR property and a little bit different housing type as you move further to the east. So ours, we have variety from east to west, if you drew your sub-districts that way. We don't have as much variety north to south. So those sub-districts don't quite work the way that we're envisioning things. So that's a bit of feedback as well. And then finally, it doesn't actually affect us this much, but in watching the presentation this evening, the Stafford Road cross-section, you have, you have two one-way dry aisles that are 11 feet of pavement with a median in the middle. 11 feet of pavement is more narrow than an alley. And I'm not sure the fire department's going to love that cross-section. They, I don't like to design the world around the fire department, but they do have logistics about needing to put, they have stabilizers that go out. There's a reason that they need 20 feet of hard surface in most of their corridors. So I would encourage you to check in with the fire department on that cross-section. So I appreciate, again, I'm sorry, this was a last-minute submission. Hopefully, you get time to read it as we move forward. And other than that, we're happy to answer. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right.
I know, I mean, it's a challenge to get it this late. It's good information. I think, I think the biggest question I have for staff is, do you see the conflict in the type one versus type two designation? And the need for changing it to a type one to accommodate this?
So would I, I'm probably going to turn this back on the commission, so I'm just going to forewarn you of that in answering your question. And that is, I think that the first question I would have, or the first part of my answer, is trying to take a look at maybe some of these architectural examples. And in particularly, in particular, the large one that was provided is the garden-style walk-up apartments and what that would be provided along Stafford Road. And whether that somewhat aligns with what the planning commission was envisioning as we talked about, type two urban form. And some of the discussion was having the type one more central and the type two closer to Stafford, adjacent to Frog Pond West. That was a part of the conversation. When I look at some of these images of a three-story garden-style apartment, and when I've heard them be talked about and presented in the letter, that fit with the description of type two to me. So part of my question was, would there actually need to be a map change to reflect that? Because that's, in my opinion, something that we have envisioned as potentially being built in type two. I think there's a variety of things that could be built in type two. And in part, that's because we've envisioned a four-story mixed-use building along the main street. And so this would be a step down in relationship to that. And it wouldn't be a four-story building facade all the way along Stafford, but would have that variety and that step down and that transition that would better transition across the way to Frog Pond West. I think we envisioned some three-story buildings within the type two throughout the neighborhood, and you could have four-story buildings in the type one. And so that creates that transition down. A lot of the houses you're going to have in type three, our lowest density, are probably going to be two-story homes. And so it kind of creates that transect. So to me, it felt like what was described in the letter would, felt like it fit in type two, but I couldn't say that with certainty without seeing images and without also hearing from my commission, who has been balancing all of the input you've received from the community. You've been having this dialogue around the table. And I want to make sure that this actually does align with what you have been picturing in your head when we've been having discussions about the type two versus the type one. And it may not. So that's kind of the first piece of it, is there might need to be some discussion around that with all of you to see, does that line up? I see the distinction and the concern about what is written in the text for type two urban form, and that the type two does say, buildings are intended to be two stories with three stories allowed under applicable state law for certain housing categories. The certain housing categories that are referred there is the three stories have to be allowed for middle housing. If these are units beyond the unit types for middle housing, which they appear to be based on the pictures I'm seeing, they wouldn't necessarily, they would not meet the definition by state law of middle housing, and we wouldn't have to allow three stories. That being said, you know, I don't know that we definitively feel that strongly that three stories would only be allowed for middle housing. Maybe we want to also allow it for multifamily housing, and that's a discussion we could have. And so there are options here in terms of how to potentially address this, as I see the question and issue in front of you, which is, if this does align with what you've been thinking, that for type two, then maybe it is relevant to keep it as type two, but make a wording change, a verbiage change, a decision around what you want to allow to three stories or not in type two? Or if you believe that type two should really be as presented in the document and the words that are on that page, then there could be discussion about whether you want to modify the map and whether you feel like a modification of the map is consistent with the conversation we've had over the last six months. So I see those as the different paths or discussions that the commission probably would want to have related to this item.
Thank you. Thoughts from the commission? Mr. Carr?
I think we had originally said type two because we were blending into Frog Pond West. However, the commercial section is going to be four-story. So it seems to me to make sense that the area surrounding it could have three-story. I like, I like the idea. I think it builds up on the multifamily functionality and affordability fits into that. And I think, I don't want to necessarily change the description of the type. I'm more in favor of changing the map. Because if we change the type, it opens that type up almost across the board. And I don't know if that's our intent. If our intent is to more focus on this plot of land and say, yes, what you're presenting makes sense, I'd rather change the map.
And I think that's helpful. And I would just add to that, that maybe you want to open up the map, or I can try to find it in the presentation and bring up the type map. Because we did have conversation about what, how many stories do you want to have around the neighborhood park as well? How many stories do you want to have? And so that might help inform the decision about what, whether it's a verbiage change or a map change. Because when we had had prior conversations, I felt like there was a desire for three-story buildings around the neighborhood park as well. And so if that's the case, then it might be a verbiage change versus a map change. And whether you want more height on the main street and ensuring that there's some step down along the rest of Stafford. Because if you make it type one, you could have four stories on that whole Stafford, because type one is up to four stories. So I just put that out there in terms of how it's, how I think it's described. And, because the type one says buildings two to four stories and close to the street. So there's kind of a few moving pieces there in terms of, do you want that distinction on the main street versus the rest of Stafford? And do you want, what do you want to see around the park in addition to what you want to see? to see along Stafford? Because that will probably, that, all those pieces, I think, weigh into it.
Well, not to interject inappropriately, but I think there's probably, also the question, do you want four stories in type 1? I mean, we know four-story on Main Street is, has been consistently talked about. Four-story outside of Main Street, I think, is probably a valid question. But it's your business, don't mind.
It seems that when we were discussing the experience going up or down Stafford Road, that we wanted to make sure, especially when you come down Stafford Road, as you go from rural to urban, you slowly kind of go up. And a three-story to then four-story and then back down makes sense to me, especially tied to the boulevard design that we saw for Stafford. But this big, the big example of the garden style is oriented, for me, wrong. It should be oriented towards Stafford, whatever we propose there, so that it's not turning its back to Stafford. It's looking upon the boulevard and across the boulevard to the church and all the rest of the stuff that's in West. It makes Stafford more of an urban street, which kind of addresses, are we going to expand this to two lanes or whatever? It would ruin the whole sense of that, that stretch if we did something like that. Because then you would have these apartments that are looking at a very busy street, which is not what currently is being proposed. So I'm fine with the proposal if it respects the boulevard and faces the boulevard. So some of these other ones, the smaller examples in your third page, would make a lot more sense.
Yeah.
So that's one comment. What we do around the park is an interesting question. You know, the same question could come up is, do we want to maximize that kind of a view upon the park and open, open space and allow for a three-story there? I'm fine with that. But then again, you know, you could have a two-story as well, looking on the park more dense, and that would be fine as well. I'm not, I don't think it's always a good idea to put a big wall next to an open space.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll have a piece of it.
And that is what we sketched. If you look at our site plan on the, on the southern portion of the garden-style apartments, we have the buildings to Stafford side and the parking on the backside. And we could certainly do that north of Main Street as well.
North of Main Street, you have more room. So you could have both. So long as you don't have your back on Stafford, I'm happy.
Yeah, we can accommodate.
Ms. Bates, you mentioned that the garden-style apartments do not meet the criteria of middle housing.
Correct. So middle housing is specifically defined at the state level. Duplexes, ADUs, actually, I can't remember, ADUs is actually in it, but triplex, fourplex, cottage housing, those are the state mandated and definitions provided for middle housing. So depending on the units, which these appear to have more than a fourplex, would not meet the definition of middle housing at the state level.
But they could meet the definition of, you know, the 80% to 120% of the median income.
Correct. So those are, right, it could be, absolutely. So in terms of when we were talking about the housing variety policy and we were kind of putting buckets of housing types together, this absolutely would be in the bucket of housing types that would help us to achieve more market affordable housing opportunities or choices. And so I think in my viewpoint, that's probably why, that and the form we've been talking about related to type 2, it felt like a fit. But this fits within that, within that bucket of housing.
Yeah, for me, that affordability takes priority.
But I guess I would say that, that it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we will get affordable, it's just that it is technically feasible. Because it, you know, you go look at, at some of the costs for apartments or some of the condos in the Lake Oswego developments, and those are by no stretch of the imagination affordable. But they could have been. So that's the challenge that we'll face here, is its entirety is still up to dependent, the development.
But we face that with every type.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah, very much so.
And it is part of why we're just providing that distinction between the Main Street multifamily and the garden style. The garden style just is designed to lower that price point. It doesn't have the elevators, it doesn't have the common shared space, the lobbies, things like that. So there, it's functionally designed to keep the price point lower. Whereas the Main Street, you're investing in retail space, you have to have fit and finish. The elevators just kick it. At that point, you have to go to the higher marketplace.
I think from, from my perspective, the form, the third story, the three-story garden style form seems appropriate. You know, the, the idea of changing it to type 1 and then opening it up to four stories kind of throws me off. And so I think I would be leaning towards a text change to allow the three-story multifamily in type 2, just so that it does maintain a little bit more of that transition from Frog Pond West, and then also as we go north and south down to a more reasonable form.
But then that means we open all type 2s to that. And there's considerable acreage in type 2.
I will note that three-story is typically allowed throughout all of our residential neighborhoods. So up to 35 feet is, well, we actually have 25 feet and 35 feet. But throughout the city, we are required to allow three stories for all middle housing. So even in your type 1, while we may predominantly call for one-to-two-story homes, and we'll likely end up with some single-family detached in one-to-two, we would allow, so if you ended up having a townhouse or a duplex, that could absolutely be three stories. So I just want to note that, just in terms of height and form you may get throughout the area. But you're absolutely right that it would open up, up to three stories for whatever, if you change language, if it's for a certain type of housing type or any housing type, middle housing and multifamily or for everything, it would open up more possibility.
Does that then come down to our identification of minimum and maximum types of products that we've been talking about? Is that how that is controlled?
The variety standards are likely going to impact that. So if they're choosing from three different buckets or two different buckets, we haven't made the determination yet exactly on what that looks like, that would probably play into some of the height that you will see. Because you may have, maybe, I mean, it's hard to say, if you are providing townhomes that are two stories as well as two-story single-family detached and two-story cottages, then they're all the same height, most likely. But you could have three-story townhomes, a two-story single-family detached, and maybe single-story ADUs. And then you may see more fluctuation in building height within the same area.
There's a lot of levers.
So now we have to figure out if we want to make any changes.
I could just add maybe a couple other thoughts on this. If you are headed towards the three-story, what I'll call the friendly face to Stafford approach, which makes sense for all the reasons that you've said, a couple of other things sort of get implied about that. One is how the friendly face is actually executed with buildings. On the west side of Stafford, there is the brick wall treatment. So this approach would imply that there is not the brick wall approach. On the east side, one. Another consideration is where the portals into the building, how those are arranged. It's common for a garden-style apartment to have a single central breezeway portal up into the building. And I know I'm getting to kind of a detailed level, but if that is the only way into the building, then what else presents the friendly face? Are there, are there some porches or some balconies or, or something else that is kind of semi-public space? And the third consideration would be sort of the, what I'll call the continuousness along Stafford Road. It's about 600 feet of dimension from advance up to where you get to these blocks, Brisbane blocks. And so three buildings in there that have some space between them, that have maybe some variation, would go a long way towards breaking down the continual wall kind of impression. These pictures do a really good job of showing articulation, materials nicely done, peaked roofs, nicely done architecture. And it just, I think you have to think about how all three of the monopoly pieces get put together so that it has a really nice total effect. And the landscaping does part of that, too. So here we are getting beyond master planning, but I think it's, I think it's part of a package, really, of design that you're thinking of, and those are, those will be my extra thoughts I'd throw in.
It's a good litmus test to our plan, our master plan.
Do we need to make a decision tonight? Or is this something that can get proposed by staff as a, either a language change or whatever, when you ponder it over the next week or so? And the ramifications, because I hate to make a hasty decision that has unintended consequences that we haven't looked at.
We do not have to make a decision tonight. I would ask that if, based on additional conversation from others, I'd like to hear from everyone if you have an opinion, because we haven't heard from everybody quite yet, and whether or not you have anything to add based on what you've heard from other commissioners or from staff. So I guess one last, do you have further input to help staff as we try to weigh this?
And I guess the one addition, I agree completely, Miranda, the one addition I would have is, the next time we see this is a public hearing. So it, yeah, we need to figure out what we want to see at that final version. Because unless we want to make a motion to change it at a public hearing, this is kind of the time.
Yeah, so I would prefer the strongest opinions you have on the matter. We do have a few items that I noted that we need to follow up with. Some are just answers to questions that you had, which we always like to do, and we can do by email. And if there are a few changes also made relative to that, we can communicate that to you as a group. But any discussion about it really needs to occur here. And so we would put forth a recommendation based on your discussion and, and any recommendation you can make to staff tonight.
Great. Commissioner Gallagher?
We tried.
I like the garden, the illustration with the garden apartments. I think it's a wonderful gracious front to the neighborhood. So without going into particulars, I would be in favor of that idea very much, if there's some way to make that work.
Yeah, the question at hand is, do we have to change the type to allow it? Or do we have to change?
I, I understand that, and I don't know whether I feel equipped to make that decision. I think that's a technical thing, and I leave it to your judgment as to what would be the most efficient way to go about without impacting everything else. Because I think it's a complicated thing. But I know you're capable of doing it, Miranda.
Is that four?
Well, that's not a bad idea.
I don't, so yeah, so I appreciate the opportunity. If you don't have a strong opinion on the fix, it might be helpful to understand whether or not you see placement of these garden-style apartments in other areas of type 2 being appropriate.
I do.
Okay.
Commissioner Mespa?
I've already spoken my bit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I'm going around to everybody. Commissioner Tsuzensky?
I think I would be at most in favor of a verbiage change for type 2 to allow multifamily three-story. Just, I don't want to open that, that area up to a four-story situation. And I could see those in other areas, especially around the neighborhood park. So that would be my vote.
Commissioner Carr?
I am still somewhat reluctant to open it because I'm not sure what ramifications it would have throughout type 2. But I am okay with verbiage change, with concerns.
Noted. Commissioner Willard?
Yes, in favor of the garden-style apartments along that corridor. I'm leaning towards allowing the garden-style apartments in type 2.
Yeah, I'm still in favor of the verbiage change. I do share Commissioner Carr's concern about the potential ramifications. I think if I were to guess, it's the concern about a proliferation of multifamily throughout east and south and the concern around that. And I know that the public is concerned about that as well. So I, maybe, Miranda, that's something that, that you guys can think about here as we move forward. And if there's anything that we need to think about or put in place to help ensure that that doesn't happen.
Handle that through the Minmaxes first.
Yes, staff can definitely have that conversation and think that through. We have not officially categorized the housing types. That will happen during the code. This is just the strategy that that will be part of getting at the housing variety policies in the code. So staff will weigh all of these things over. The project team will talk about, okay, let's play out both of these scenarios and what might that look like? And is it handled through those variety standards? Or what's the best recommendation we have? So I think the, the roundtable we just did, I think we got some clear direction on what to consider, and then we can come back with a recommendation.
And we would couple that with the concept of, for this particular street edge, the buildings provide a friendly face to Stafford, and we'll flesh out what that means in the master plan words.
Okay.
Because yeah, my, my concern was, as you stated, it's, you know, we, early on, we had the discussion of, we don't want all multifamily in one section, right? So this idea of variety and spreading it out. But we also don't want single, all single family over in West and all multifamily over in east and south, because we don't, don't want that to happen. We want that variety. And that was my only concern with opening type 2. But I, I like what's presented. I think you did, you guys did a great job with that.
Well, I think that's all the project team had. And I think that you responded to the public input and gave staff some direction on that. I'm not sure we have anything else on the agenda, but I will turn it back to you, Chair.
So we're on to our next topic, adjournment. I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right. This planning commission meeting is adjourned at 8:29 PM.